Call this meeting to order.
We'll see.
Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Uh oh Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Ilzavec.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Engstrom.
Here.
Item two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
There are no changes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Item three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A presentation, presentation about the lights after school. YSS Kids Club Program. Graham, let me welcome Denia Steenhoek. Pronunciation.
Hi, Nancy.
Yes.
It's okay. Uh, well, for Kelly, uh, this is Michael Fatley. She's the room coordinator on the United Kids Coordinator. Uh, yeah, I think you just list for the opportunity that we have to present. Um, is it okay if Nikki brings up some invitations for these events?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, but yeah, so we are part of this club out of YSS and Ames. Um, they, they just go for an actual program for a lot of families that both parents worked or we have a lot of parents that are teachers, obviously a parent teacher, they can't get their kid right off school about three twenty. Uh, yeah, it's part of YSS. And early outs, late starts in those two days. This also includes winter and spring break. So while the kids are out, we are still on full session. We provide all day programming during the summer. Summer is really fun. Um, we literally as coordinators get paid to go to the pool, like the zoo. So it's a lot of fun for the kids. Um, see how they kind of grow and mature throughout the summer and then we get to have them again in the square. Uh, most kids go sites have kindergarten through six years of our ages. I, I have preschoolers, so like something simple kids walk in on the first day of their day. Um, we are who, um, support from grants and other things. We're able to offer scholarships to families who may not be able to afford. Our fees, um, you go on a site and pay sales, what you pay based on how much you need. And then for our mission, we like to make sure this was a safe environment, stimulating environment where children come hard and grow. And then also just be a safe place for some kids. People, they, they struggle to find a good daycare and we hope that we're one of those areas that these parents still want to trust us. Not so that their kid has a stimulating environment that they feel safe and that they can. Um, so why are we here today? Um, is we are every in October, we put on an open house and it's different sites. So there's seven sites. So Nikki's at Boone, I'm at United, um, and then we have two Gilbert sites, um, a Ballard sites, an Ogden sites, and then the Rollinsbury site. Uh, so basically it's called Lights On After School, basically to keep the lights on after school again, just to add a cape, but I'll take the point of the night. Uh, my events in around Tuesday, the twenty first of October from five thirty to seven P M. As you can see, um, my kids are doing a froggy in the fall theme. Um, they want to do a fall and a frog and I'm like, they're meshing together. Uh, the thing that I sometimes show what I feel like is knowing that we also have to decorate and plan food that goes along with the theme. Uh, so trying to make sure they come down to a near. And then Nikki, you want to explain when your amendment is?
Artists will be on the twenty eighth of October and it will be five thirty, seven o'clock at Ledges Elementary. Um, we decided we were kind of a divided home, but she went with lighting up ledges, uh, to kind of bring our boys and girls together with their boys wanting the more spooky side. The girls wanted the new K-pop Demon Hunters. If you haven't heard that in your home, you will. Um, so we are doing sort of just accepting all, be bright, be you, be bold. Um, and it's welcome to everybody. They are excited and. Yeah. Uh, anybody have any questions or anything?
That's a great program. I'm glad you guys keep coming and informing us about it.
Love it. It's a lot of fun. It's okay. There's kids. Uh, I do have some that I did want to pass out more to community because my kids, um, typically, I guess in previous years, they only made a couple invitations to go out and this is maybe a third of what my kids made. Uh, they absolutely love it and they are excited for people to come to actually come see what they've been working on. Uh, so I did. Down there, uh, but this is just the legend one, but the other one on the twenty third, not far in United. We'll try dating out like clothing.
How many kids usually show up at your events?
Uh, so for our, we're scheduling around a hundred, two hundred and twenty because our enrollment is up to fifty. So we tuned it up to the highest of moments. United.
I was gonna come out. Um, we offer dropping care as well for families. So basically they're just as they needed. I have about sixty two kids enrolled and we have about, I think about a year last year. Um, so I will say unfortunately around the fall season, so sometimes families possibly come tough, but we'll always like to claim more because you get leftovers.
Are you at your maximum or you can take more?
I can say more. My max because they, um, how services does it? It's based off, um, like square footage of the building. My max is actually two hundred. Um, because we have a bunch like, you know, I used to be old high school, so it's pretty big. Um, and then you know, your nice class. Leave our boxes seventy seven. We have tried to cap ours about at fifty, just with the space allowance that we're given right now. We are looking on that because I do have a waitlist. Um, but I currently opened up my waitlist while we are trying to get another employee. Um, so we are hoping to at least take in another fifteen if possible, if the need calls.
Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys.
Item B, request to place arch signage on the right of way. Polly Tucker.
There, can I drop you? We're just looking, uh, to place some signage in the right of way to communicate that, uh, the site will be the future homes of the downtown arch. Uh, garner some community support as well as the signage that you see here, uh, can either be a banner or paraded plastic yard sign type material. Uh, it's designed as a twenty eight by forty feet, but that's also flexible. So just wanted to ask for your permission tonight to place something there for the communication effort.
So moved. Please call the rolls.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes. Yes.
C, public hearing on authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of notices of evidence, the obligation of the city thereunder. Are there any written comments? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We have one thirty four thirty resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed one point five million dollars in general obligation capital loan notes. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
Item two, thirty four thirty one resolution approving electronic bidding procedures and distribution of preliminary official statement.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
D, public hearing concerning the lease and exchange of real estate owned by the city of Boone. Are there any written comments?
No.
Are there any public comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, my name is Luke Slings. I'm here representing the Iowa Army National Guard. I just wanted to say that, uh, we, we so appreciate all the efforts of city staff and airport commission, uh, to get us to this point. Uh, we're excited about staying in the community of Boone, uh, and growing our mission here. Uh, if, if, uh, council has any questions for me about, about the project or about the exchange agreement, uh, certainly available to take those down.
Take the opportunity to explain what this is going to allow you to do.
Sure. So, uh, our facility, uh, existing in Boone is about thirty five thousand square feet. It was constructed, um, more than thirty years ago. Um, it's starting to show its age and, uh, it's unable to accommodate the missions that we would like to have here in Boone. So this new facility would expand, uh, more than triple the space that we have here in town. Let me enable us to expand our mission, add airframes, add employees, uh, that kind of thing, uh, here in Boone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the partnership. Any other public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing explodes. Item one, thirty four thirty two resolution authorizing the leasing and exchange agreement of real estate at the city of Boone Airport in Iowa. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
And.
Yes. Yes.
Item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing none. Item five, reports of standing committees. A, policy administration. Williamson.
No report tonight.
The public safety and transportation. So moved.
Uh, I have a few things on the agenda. Uh, number one is to discuss the ordinance change for a three-way stop sign at South Jackson and Hancock Drive. Uh, we talked about this at our last meeting. Uh, I think we were all in agreeance that we were okay to do this, um, but we wanted to bring it to full council just to discuss it.
I think that was.
And we just wanted to prove the direct, uh, way to, uh, amend the ordinance.
This is the intersection that's next to Ledges Elementary School. Uh, it gets very hectic in school times. Um, just with people coming from, uh, from DMAC and there the four-way stop there. It's about every thirty foot. There's a car in the mornings and the afternoons, just to try to keep traffic flowing a little bit more.
Is it appropriate? Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Our second item is to request to place a deer crossing sign on South Marshall Street by the golf course. I feel like this one's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions?
Get motion for that. So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
And then number three is a street closure application for Halloween parade, um, shops on story. Then. Perfect. Have they rejoined? Take it over.
Uh, I'm Heather Davis. I'm representing shops on story in the Halloween parade, uh, committee, if you will. Uh, this is our first year attempting to do a Halloween parade and for shops on story is our first parade. So we are open to any and all criticism and critiques, so we can make sure that we do it right. Um, we really chose a very simple path this year. Our goal was to start in that parking lot right at the keeler on Ninth Street, literally come east on Ninth, down Story, over on Sixth, up and back around adding in that same parking lot. Um, in this moment, we only have thirteen to fourteen floats. Our goal is to have twenty to twenty-five. Um, but we are leaving that open until around the thirty first, so this is something that we intend to be kind of like the Christmas parade, quick, easy, but a lot of fun. Um, it won't start until eight P M. So it is in the evening after trick or treating and our goal is to just kind of bring families together after that. Uh, we'd like to see this grow in the future and this is just our first year kind of out of the gate, seeing what we can pull together. We've got a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of people really excited to come and attend too. And it's so.
Awesome.
So what night is this?
It's Halloween night, October thirty first at eight P M, right after the beggars night, right after Boone trick or treating.
So moved. Second. Questions?
Is there any concerns? G.
No, it's gonna, I mean, downtown doesn't have a lot of traffic during that time anyway.
Yeah.
With kids, uh.
We did, we had a lot of requests in residential neighborhoods for closing streets down and that, and it's not as organized as this and that becomes problematic. All right.
Henson.
Yes.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
You need to. Yes, again.
All right. Anything further?
No, that's all, your honor. Thank you.
Uh, C utility, Engstrom.
No report. Thank you.
D, economic development. Mormon.
Uh, we did meet. Heather's leaving, but, uh, we met down at Emma's elegance and approved a BDA grant for that property and the adjacent property to that. They're smaller, not the thirty thousand dollar type, but the smaller ones for some improvements to their windows and, uh, front. So, um, when there's, when that works, then we'll bring it back to council. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay, item six, department reports, building essential save. Attorney rape.
No report, your honor.
Uh, Director of Public Works, Wayland.
Thank you. A while back, I came to you guys and asked you to fill our utilities department labor position and gracefully let me do that. We've came to the conclusion and we went through the interviewing process and we have selected, uh, Eddie Eduardo Cortez, he goes by Eddie, um, as the applicant for this position. He is a local resident to Boone. In his application and through the interview process, he stood out to us. He comes to us with quite a bit of experience in jet truck operation, uh, sanitary sewer cammering. He actually worked for, uh, one of the records that lines our sanitary sewers. So he's bringing quite a bit of experience in that field and he'd be greatly, um.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Do you have anything you would like to say?
No, I just, thanks for the opportunity. Hopefully we can do whatever we gotta do to keep this city glowing.
Sounds good to me. Welcome to the team.
Great.
Thank you.
Secondary note, uh, public work staff who will be, uh, on the street tomorrow. Hope everything goes good, but we're gonna pair into some more fire hydrant replacement. We found an area of the town there that the fire hydrants and water mazes needed some work, so probably four to five movement in that stretch between Mamie and Dave's house at four twenty eight South Story we released last week, and we're just gonna keep moving up the line. So you'll see weekly notifications and we're gonna keep working on that. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, uh, F recreation director, Nate.
Uh, thank you, your honor. Just a, a few things. We, uh, had a fishing event, uh, previously. We had a, a good turnout, but not a lot of turnout of fish. Uh, so we're gonna try and reclaim the pond on the twenty ninth, uh, that was just released today. Or the twenty fifth, sorry, uh, for fishing. Uh, our last pickleball session will be tomorrow evening. And we have, uh, kind of a cool program, uh, working at the library. We're gonna have a fireside chat with coffee. It's gonna be aimed at seniors and connections and kind of one of those um, things that we hope kind of incubates ideas for what seniors want to do, what else they may want to do, but having just a conversation, coffee conversation type program there in the library next to a fireplace. That's why it's fireside chat. So.
What's the date on that?
Uh, the fireside chats will begin on ten twenty nine, so Wednesday mornings. And that's all I had. Unless anyone have questions?
And that's new, right? That's new?
That's new. Yeah.
Yeah. And how do you get the word out? I mean, how?
So, um, I've done the regular stuff. I'll be, uh, making flyers, uh, to, to reach those who don't engage much with computers. It'll be on social media. Ray is also, uh, sharing it on, on, and there's stuff and willing to players there as well, but.
Take flyers to like Alice Place in Regency. I'm sure they would appreciate that.
And, uh, the senior center down.
Yeah.
Well, so can I have that mapped out? So we'll be having paper. I have kind of the mock-up already, already done, but we'll, we'll make some.
Good.
Good looking ones for.
Good.
Sweet.
Appreciate it.
D engineer, Harry.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, this is the resolution to approve the contract documents for the Hancock Drive project, uh, awarding, we awarded the contract already. Uh, to have some improvement. Now we have the contract back in hand and ready for signature.
So move to approve.
Second. It's called the roll.
Uh oh Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Ilzavec.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Engstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Okay, uh, H public safety chief, Adam.
Yes, your honor. Uh, as we've talked the last few council meetings, uh, uh, about residency requirements and those kind of things, one of the things that should staffing, uh, question and looking at, uh, what the staffing is at the fire department, uh, tonight, uh, after some meetings, um, with the city administrator, the mayor. Um, we have been looking at, we did a study, uh, quickly in August about, uh, using a fourth person to help, uh, offset some, uh, call-ins, those kind of things. Uh, we saw a huge, uh, success with that. And so, uh, tonight what we're doing is asking for an additional, um, sixty thousand dollars basically out of the general fund, uh, with a total package of about seventy four thousand, uh, to have, to have a fourth person at the fire department for sixty percent of the week. So we have our regular three and sixty percent of the week would have a fourth person, which would cover always Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Those are our bigger times that we, uh, have a trouble calling people in, whether it's our volunteers, our part timers or our full timers. And then spread the rest of it out throughout the week, um, especially during times when we're doing, uh, rental inspections and those kind of things where, those are our busy times where it's hard to either make multiple calls, split crews and or get calls, uh, people to come back in. Um, so I will field questions.
And you said you've tried this. I mean, you've had.
Tried this in August. Yep. And I, uh, during, we saw a huge success. Um, our overtime budget, uh, last year was probably at about sixty five percent already. Uh, we're at about twelve and a half to thirteen percent right now. We've seen that much of a reduction. Uh, and here you can see, uh, because I, I've, uh, planned out for this, I think I could take money out of the overtime line item that, uh, see that reduction, um, easily, uh, for the rest of this year to help, uh, offset some of that cost, uh, to bring that down to the original cost is eighty four thousand, uh, but to bring it down to that fifty nine five.
Yeah. So we're reducing callback, reducing overtime, reducing burnout and stress and things like that. By employing this fourth person.
Our biggest burnout done from the overtime, the callbacks on the dance off, as everybody is well aware of. So I know that this is an increase. This is a mid-year budget deal. Um, it's not something that is very popular that we do during the middle of the budget season, but we thought that we could look at this and try to, uh, um, how this works throughout the rest of this fiscal year. So I would entertain any more questions.
This is just a short-term fix, right?
Right now it's a short-term fix. We're looking at some, uh, some different options, um, and, and there's, there's a lot of different options out there. Um, but, uh, for right now, this would be a short-term fix. Um, I would be able to come to you at budget time and have more definitive numbers if we wanted to look at, uh, next year's fiscal year of, of staffing with four and what that looks like if we did it with four. I say four on shift. I apologize. It'd be time for four parts, uh, yeah, the fourth person is part-time all the time. Uh, that number is probably around the, an additional two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, uh, to staff that, um, to staff, to add one person per shift full-time is around, around that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. So, but yes, right now this is temporary.
But I think it's, it's proven effective in reducing the amount of overtime and.
Right.
Sounds good. Do you need a motion?
I would need a motion for approval.
All right.
And then we would, uh, we would make an amendment at the.
Yeah, we'll do a budget amendment. Yeah.
But wait till the second and then you can give a motion.
All second.
Then we can just open discuss.
I know this is a temporary fix, but what are we gonna do? You know, I'm, I'm kind of putting the cart before the horse here, but next year when you want the four people and then, you know, I'm getting, you know, beat up by the fire department all over Facebook. You know, uh, talk about burnout, you know, I work a full-time job and then I, I, yeah, I get paid to do this, but I'm getting blown up on the, on the phone by everybody else, you know, saying this and that about the fire department. You talk about burnout, I'm kind of getting burnt out on getting beat up on Facebook by the fire department. It's not, it's not the people beating me up. It's the fire department beating me up.
Sure. And can I, can I just respectfully, it, it's the union that's making Facebook posts, not the fire department. I've.
But, well, it's one in the same in my eyes, really, you know, um, you know, you're the one leading this group. And, um, prior to this, you know, you, it's, we went with your recommendation on the residency thing and not changing that. I got beat up by your, by your guys and their union because we didn't change it.
Sure.
Because that's not fixing the issue. The problem is, is we got to find the money to provide these guys and not just four or three more. They want six more guys in the next year. Where are we gonna find this money from? Because the general fund can't take much of a hit on this.
Right.
Every single year. You know, I think we need to look at, you know, if the rental inspection is that big of a deal for you guys, because they always put it on their Facebook posts about all the rental inspections. David Aides is, is busy.
Yep.
You know, uh, we can, we can, we'd be better off hiring one gentleman for less than two hundred thousand dollars a year to help out his department and we can give them the rental inspections. Instead of drawing this out and wanting six more people over the next year and a half is what I see.
Well, and that's, that's why we all came together to map out some possibilities and plans for how can, how can we approach the staffing levels in a, in a measured and reasonable manner so that we don't get into a situation where, you know, departmental resources are pitted against one another because I'm not going to stand for that at all. Uh, and so we have a, a number of areas where we can work towards the future, but it's gonna take, could take a little bit of time. And I think, you know, what we talked about was some short-term, medium-term, long-term, uh, ways to first of all, reduce the amount of callback for our firefighters so that they're not, uh, getting burned out and things of that nature. And I think this is the first step along that path, but you know, it's, it's, it's gonna be something that's really diligently planned and not off the cuff.
You know, in the, you know, early two thousands, I know that there was a study done, uh, with the fire department to see what kind of hours are actually working and how much they're doing. Um, is this something that we need to look into and do and bringing a specialist in to see how much we really need somebody to step in or how much we really need somebody. Uh, I, you know, uh, police department's in the same boat. I said, they've been short-staffed for, you know, years, you know, I, I, yeah, I know, like, you know, I said, it's the same thing with him. You know, you guys want six, he'd be happy with two. You know, so it's just, it, it's, it creates a snowball effect that I don't know how we're gonna do it. I said, I know that as a community, we're growing. And, you know, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna increase the levy on anybody.
Right.
You know, we lowered the levy three years ago and nobody even noticed it.
We can't.
But.
Can't.
But, but I know.
And that's, and that's why.
That's what I'm saying is that it's gonna have to come from somewhere else.
I understand where you're coming from and, and that's why we're looking at several options on how we'll approach the situation, not rob theater to pay Paul. Um, and, and to look at it from the standpoint of what's necessary.
And I feel like that I, I don't know if I have all the information to make an accurate vote at this time on this. Um, with, I said, this is coming down the same thing when we talked about residency requirements. This is a short-term fix. It isn't gonna fix the problem. You know, on, on, on there.
Well, actually, I mean, so it's been proven to really alleviate the amount of callback and the overtime that have been expended. And so, uh, increasing the line item now, build that into this fiscal year's budget. Dustin's coming forward with his next fiscal year's budget with this in mind for the request at the time. And it was kind of an experiment at first, didn't know whether or not it would return overtime and callback, and it has done that. And so I think this is an appropriate step.
Well, I think this is just a temporary appeasement of what's been going on. This, this isn't gonna, this isn't gonna stop, Eli.
Well, I'm focused on the core issue, which is the, the overtime and callback. And I think it's gonna be effective with amendments.
That's fine, but this, this Facebook crap is not gonna stop. They're gonna keep doing it until we either cave or we just say absolutely not. And this is a really delicate subject because if you come out against that, I've been on council for six and a half years and I don't remember one time that we denied the fire or the police department anything that they asked for. This one time we did this and this is what we get. We get attacked and I'm done with it. I'm done with it. Come up with the ideas. You try to fund this. Well, we're looking at options. I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
It's that me.
There are a number, there are a number of different avenues that can be.
Well, could you explain some of them?
Well, the ramifications of them really aren't what we need to talk about right now because we're not taking those actions. We're investigating how much revenue can come from where and what the staffing levels would look like with all of them. There's a lot of tires that need to be kicked before there's proposed.
Let's kick, let's kick them then because we got to figure this out. I said, when, when I'm representing the public and the public's sitting right here, I want all my information from these guys right here in a public environment where I don't have to go to the firehouse and talk to them independently. I want it to be right here in front of the people.
Is what administration is talking about as proposal. We're talking about right now, what has been motioned and seconded is the increase in the part-time line to reduce the overtime and callback for the rest of the fiscal year.
And what I'm saying is, is that this motion will not make this go away.
Well, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. What I'm concerned about is, is reducing the amount of callback and overtime that's being experienced by our firefighters. And this has been a way that's been shown to be able to work. And so it's something that's actionable right now that we're able to do. Um, but the further issues need to be discussed and, and worked over in time.
This is a temporary fix and I don't agree with it.
Who motion and second. Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Mormon?
No.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
No.
Bird?
Yes.
Ensign?
No.
Oh, Kelly?
Yes.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. And into the third quarter, so I'll give you some stats from the city or the police department. So so far this year, we've responded to seven thousand five hundred seventy six calls for service. This was from, and last day of September. We've arrested two hundred and forty two people, written five hundred and fifty four traffic citations, nine hundred and forty six warning citations or traffic warnings, excuse me, and have issued eight hundred and thirty nine parking tickets. We had a really good turnout at the Stonebridge event pre, before school started. We gave out a bunch of stuff there and Funker Tree is October twenty third downtown. And that's a fundraiser for Shop With A Cop, which funds are starting to come in pretty good now. So we hope for another good shop with a cop event. Any questions on happenings of the PD?
Any guys are you short right now?
Four. So one's deployed. I have two on injured injury leave or medical leave, and I have one that's on critical incident leave from an incident that happened. Next council meeting, I should be bringing forward a new employee to be sworn in. Thank you.
Hi, City Administrator Andrea.
I sent out the executive report for the hotel study. I reached out to Mike several times this weekend and again today. Unfortunately, he did not reply until about an hour ago. He is still working on the final hotel study. From the executive summary, it does show that the market study shows that Boone can support and benefit from a new hotel. This is based on a growing corporate demand. Of course, it is a big player in that leakage, which means current travelers, business individuals that are needing a place to stay overnight and how much of them are going over to Ames. That's the reflection of us being down eighteen percent and Ames being up eighteen percent. That kind of directly correlates that. And then the rooms to support the Fairway Event Center at Cobblestone was another reason for the results of the hotel study showing that we could support this. That is that Cobblestone's event center can hold four hundred guests. Cobblestone only has forty rooms. So that limits the amount of people willing to rent out that event center with no rooms for their guests to stay there. Mike said at five o'clock today that he would have me a report by tomorrow. I, we have, we are going to renegotiate the price due to the delay in this. So we're going to sit down and talk about that. I did not, I asked about the restaurant study. I have not gotten that either, an update on that. But I do hope to have a final report to you guys by the next council meeting. In the council pack up, we are requesting that you approve the official statement for the one point one million two hundred and seventy five thousand general obligation note. This is a note for Hancock Drive. And the official statement is basically a document that provides financial data and a glimpse of what the city has happening to potential investors that would be interested in bidding on the one million two hundred and seventy five thousand general obligation note. Christina, the finance officer, Spear Financial, and myself have reviewed this document, and we recommend approval.
Moved. Please call the rolls.
Oh, Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Oh, Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
I emailed out the budget calendars, but I also have a printed copy at your desk. It pretty much mimics any of the past years with the change that the goal setting will be at library this year. And department heads will be included in on that discussion. The CIP committee meeting has also been moved up a couple of weeks. For those that are involved in that, it's at the end of October. And that is just give me enough time after that committee has approved what should may be made active to create a presentation for the second meeting in November to present to the rest of the council. I will be at Coffee and Connections tomorrow promoting BDF. We are, there are some staff members at a meeting with Jim Tomitich this week to go over the stage and some preliminary stuff before he starts the design on that. And City Hall will be closed Friday morning from eight AM to nine AM for some training for City Hall staff.
Very much. Andrea. Item seven consented, all I think was, I think that would be the one person. No separate discussion unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motions.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Angstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Oh, Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Okay, eight ordinances. We have none, nine mayor's comments. We have discussed deer control plan, as you know. We instituted an ordinance to prohibit the feeding of deer as one step as part of our deer control program. We had a discussion of goal setting last year about going forward and what the next steps would be, and that would be changing the ordinance on projectiles fired within city limits. Chief has done some digging into what that looks like. And I've asked him to kind of break forward his observations.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I've been in contact with Captain Cummings for a little while now. She's the DNR Wildlife Depredation Biologist or Area. And talking about the urban deer hunts or what DNR calls them is deer management zones. I've had a number of conversations with like sized cities, nearby cities, Ames, Ames, Oskaloosa, Mason City, Marshalltown, and Fort Dodge about how this has worked for them. I have copies of their ordinances to allow this type of thing. So typically statewide, there's a lot of cities that have deer management zones. What they do is allow people to hunt city limits of their city and in parks and in private land, if they own that land or get permission to do so. The regulations for that are fairly similar, but kind of the distances and the amount of property needed to, to do, to hunt on kind of vary city to city. Ames is really, really restrictive and other cities are a little more open. Statewide, about fifty percent of available tags are purchased. And of those available tags, only about thirty percent have a success rate. So just as an instance, last year Ames has fifty tags available. They sold eighteen. They harvested, well, the average eighteen tags sold, they harvested sixteen deer a year for the last six years. That's not affecting their, not helping their population problem. In fact, I had a long conversation with the chief over there and he's looking for many alternatives because it's just not doing anything. It's not helping them. Oskaloosa, hundred tags available. They average sixteen deer harvested a year. Mason City has a hundred and seventy five tags available. They average about ninety sold and they harvest about forty six, so they're about fifty percent rate. Marshalltown only has sixty tags available, and I don't have a harvest number on theirs them yet. And Fort Dodge has a hundred, but talking to the Fort Dodge chief, they get a handful a year and it's not, it doesn't help the population. However, it does do something. So the steps for this is we have to apply, if we're going to have an urban deer hunt, we have to apply to the state of Iowa, and that is due in April. So we won't be able to do anything this fall. So next year, we have to, now the state of, the state of Iowa DNR recommends that we make the ordinance change first and then apply, which seems backwards to me, because if they don't grant the application, then we have an ordinance on our books that doesn't work. They say you can do it afterwards, but there's obviously time, a time problem there. So, because the state of Iowa doesn't let us know if they approve our application until July. So that's the process, but the city of Boone can apply to the state of Iowa, say, hey, we want to have a deer urban or a deer management zone for the city of Boone. They will work with us to decide how many tags we had. If you remember back to our aerial survey that we did in G, in February, there's eighty one deer that we counted. So we can decide how many tags we want if the council so moves or so decides to go with the urban deer hunt in the first place. But the DNR is fairly open to communication on how many tags we want to do and that kind of thing. The biggest problem is going to be area to hunt because in the city of Boone doesn't have a lot of outline areas that aren't already built up with homes or whatever. We don't have a lot of rural open space, right? So most of it's going to be the parks, if the parks board approves using the parks for this stuff.
So if they had a hunt in Nicole's, for example, would they shut the park down during that time?
That would be my recommendation.
Right.
But however, some of these, some of these cities, that hunting timeline is October first to January tenth.
Oh.
So they have a very broad hunting season for the urban hunts. Most of them are that way. So certainly they're not going to close the park that long.
But why, I, I guess I'm not fine. Why would we do this when it doesn't sound like it's very effective?
That's for UDI's side.
Okay, I mean, it's not making a big difference.
Yeah, so by the numbers, it doesn't look like it's going to hurt or hurt the population, bring the population down a whole lot. But it certainly does something, I guess.
Well, we don't know what the response will be here in Boone. It could be way better. Who knows?
Right. And some of that's going to depend on how, how much availability. If there's no land available, which is a problem in some of these other cities, then it's very difficult for a whole bunch of people to try and hunt it.
Have we, has this been, what, presented to the park board? Do they, have they, so?
This is, this is information. Yeah.
Right. So I mean, even if they would, yeah.
I would, I would recommend that Rafe and the chief work together on crafting an ordinance that would fit. I think we should go to the park board first before we even waste the time on that and see if they're interested in doing something like that. Would you be willing to go to park board?
Absolutely.
Dave, is there any complaints? Did any of the other cities talk about complaint? I mean, I've never deer hunted with a bow.
Yeah. There have been some complaints. And so some of these, like I said, some of these cities are very restrictive where you shoot a deer with a bow. They're, all of them have a very short distance that you you're allowed to shoot a deer from. Some of them, you have to call the police. Police officer goes there, sees the deer is dead. Then you can drag it out. Some don't require that at all. There's a, there's a lot of variations, even with the six seed is that we, I've talked to.
With the deer running around with an arrow sticking out of his shoulder and.
That would be.
So here's the thing, a couple of years ago, I had a deer jump into my neighbor's yard who was injured and had gash on its side and Sergeant Slight had to come and put it down in my neighbor's vacuum. And so there's already some of that happening.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, some people are more worked up by that than others. I mean.
I would say also, like, I would like to move forward regardless of the park is, is going to allow any land or not. If they don't allow land in the parks, you know, in particular, the agricultural area in Southwest Boone by Salama's Greenhouse that would pose. And I know Mike Salama, every time I see him, when are we going to be able to get rid of these deer? When are we going to be able to get rid of deer? Because his business is really sucked from from them. And he has tried everything possible to get them away from his plant.
Does he own that ag land though?
I don't know who owns it.
Ultimately, this will not, I'm sorry. This will not eradicate deer. And this is something I'd like to have a conversation with Mike about. This will not keep deer from eating his stuff. A deer fence is probably for his certain circumstance, that's probably the most effective. A ten foot tall deer fence will keep stuff out, but this was, is not going to eradicate a deer that's going to help him in a, in a sizable way. It really won't.
Unless they know it's an area that they shouldn't go to, but they probably not. I don't.
Yeah, I think you need to put a little fear into them though, try to keep them away.
But the point of your bow hunting is that it's quiet and doesn't put fear in them. That's the, that's the difference.
Eldon has a comment.
I know, and Patrick Sanders to service the deer. I'm a deer lover. Something has to be done. I, I applaud the thought like this, that to give out so many deer licenses with a bow probably, and I'm sure just how that's.
Always bow.
Yeah. But my thought would be maybe to you're, you're, you're going to, you're going to call it out to get the best bow hunters that you can. My thought would be to get the best of the best bow hunters, give two tags. The first one goes to the food pantry. The second one you keep. I think I could run around and get enough people to process this food pantry deer. And I'd like to see two tags.
The state already has a program for processing food pantry deer. That's free. Any, any deer hunter can drop. Get any deer hunter could drop a deer off at any locker and they'll take them. It's all the hush. So that's, that's not a problem. Again, goes to availability of ground. I mean, we can give all the deer tags we want, but if there's no land, if that fits within our parameters. So as an example, Ames to hunt a piece of property, it has to be a minimum two hundred yards by two hundred yard square property. That's not anybody's yard. That's not gonna, now Oskaloosa, it's a hundred and seventy five by hundred and seventy five. So there's varying size restrictions from varying cities. But again, I understand what you're saying. The, we don't get a go out fruit, the bow hunters. We make it available. They have to qualify. Generally, I'm generally speaking, they have to qualify with the parks department or whoever the representative of the city so chooses. You have to qualify with a certain number of shots within a small target area, qualify to even buy a tag. So there is a proficiency test part of this. But again, it all comes down to availability. If you can't hunt anywhere, it doesn't matter how many tags we have. If there's no place for them to do it, it's not going to do much of anything, unfortunately.
I was going to provide the hashtag on my dick.
If the city of Boone allows people to shoot out their decks, that opens a little.
So they can suggest that. Let's suggest we proceed both in parallel with private land, see what parameters, you know, would open up what land, so a hundred and seventy five by a hundred and seventy five or whatever. You know, what land does that make available? And then also if the park department would be interested in allowing that to occur on their properties.
I will work with Rafe on what, we can look at all the various ordinances that are out there and, or several of them at least.
Yeah, I think all my questions have already been answered, but I was going to ask you, do you have to reapply for that DNR permit every year?
I don't believe so. I didn't, I didn't ask a question. I don't, I don't think so. I think once you have the zone developed, I think we're okay. In talking to the, the woman from the DNR, she made it sound like we get a pretty good say on how many tags we want, and that can go up and down as we, as we see the need. So.
They have incentive programs too, like they give a buck tag if they have.
Yeah, so some cities do have an incentive program. Mason City has one. If you shoot two does, then you can get a tag for a buck. Which is a really good incentive, exactly. And some of them, and this is like one of my favorite things, I can't remember which, I think it's Marshalltown. It's all through the fire department. It's all their problem.
Maybe we could have a prize for the person who shoots deer or something. To get a coupon for a free, I don't know what.
That sound good with everybody to?
I'll work with the chief on that. Report back to you.
Thanks, Ron. Those are all the comments I have now. Ten council member comments.
I'm just going to hang on to that last one was when I went down through board three and talked to homeowners. Every, the closer they live in the park, the more enthusiastic they are about this idea. So it's just saying.
Do they damage the golf course?
Not bad.
Not bad. All right. House comments. Okay, item eleven, closed session for Iowa code twenty one point five one J to discuss the disposition of particular real estate where creature disclosure could be reasonably expected. This increases the price, the government body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the government body would receive for that property.
Second.
Close session.
That's what I thought. See, I thought that gravy, I thought there was a stop right there.
Yeah, we're making it. Here, in this, in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye to go to closed session.
Aye.